Good evening everyone and welcome to the December 7, 2010 meeting of the Glendale City Council. I apologize for this later than usual start. We had a full afternoon slate of meetings and needed to take just a little break before we commenced the regular city council meeting. May we have the roll call please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. And I would like to invite up for the flag salute, Mr. Wesley Meachalk. And come right up to the microphone and will you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You?
Remain standing.
Please remain standing at our heads. As we enter into this holy time of year, we ask for your continued blessings and that you keep us reminded of the reason for this season. We continue to pray for a rapid accomplishment of our military mission and for the safe return of our forces. Keep them embraced in your loving care. Finally, we ask that you serve as a guide to our council in all of their considerations. Amen.
May we have your report please?
The agenda for the December 7, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 2, 2010 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And before we go to the next item, I'd like to recognize the presence of many of our fellow employees from the city of Glendale. And because of the large number of you and a prior request for priority, I'm going to open up oral communications somewhat earlier and invite Mr. Alan Case followed by Wesley Meachalk to address council and the viewing audience.
I'm a Glendale Water and Power employee and a 20-year veteran of the military, a retiree. I believe that I served our country to ensure we maintained our freedom. The freedom of religion, the freedom to vote for our leaders and our laws, and the freedom to choose who represents us as American citizens. So my question is, why doesn't Glendale Water and Power employees as a unit have the freedom to vote for the representation it desires to represent us in any and all matters with the city of Glendale? I also ask that this be agendized for the next city council meeting as an item of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wesley, am I pronouncing it correctly?
No sir.
Michael?
Meachalk.
Meachalk.
Sure. Mayor, council members, fellow employees and citizens of Glendale, my name is Wesley Meachalk. I'm an employee of the City of Glendale Department of Water and Power. As a young man of 17 years old, I became a United States Marine. I proudly served more than 10 years all over the world, knowing that I may be called at any time to protect the American way of life. In 2004, I deployed to Ramadi, Iraq as part of Operation Iraqi Freedom. While there, my battalion took part, excuse me, in providing the people of Iraq the first free and open elections in history. Those elections in Iraq, just like the elections we Americans took part in five weeks ago, allowed the people to choose the direction, leadership, and destiny of an entire country. We city employees also wish to vote, to choose our direction and destiny, to choose our own leadership and how we are represented. On November 24, 2010, we filed a petition with the city manager's office to do just that. We filed a petition to vote and I'm asking you, the Honorable City Council of Glendale, to do what is in your power to allow us to vote. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I understand that these are the two speakers from the GWP who have requested priority. I don't have any other cards. So the rest of the speakers, we're going to go back to the regular order of oral communications as we normally do, but I did want to afford those two gentlemen and their supporters the opportunity to be heard earlier rather than later. If by chance you'd like to leave the meeting, of course you're welcome to stay, we've got a lot of interesting things, I'm going to afford you an opportunity to do so. Mr. Starbuck?
Fall off a minute.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, before you leave, let me, if you would, hold on for a second before you leave. I think they deserve a status report. Indeed, we have been served with a petition by the IBW representing 57 different classifications within GWP. The gentleman mentioned November 11, it was actually dated November 24, and I'm told by our human resources, we were served on November 29. We have prepared a response to that and frankly, the letter is waiting for is me to suggest a date at which pursuant to our municipal code, we hold a hearing to determine the justification formation of a separate unit. If indeed that concludes the need, then there is a vote that follows that subsequently. We'll be communicating with the representatives of IBW and scheduling that hearing in a timely and orderly fashion. So there will be a response, in all likelihood, latter part of this week, first part of next week scheduling that hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for attending and calling us attention to the issue.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, now, let's move to item three.
Item three are presentations and appointments at 3:8 is the agenda preview for the meeting of December 14, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, December 14 will be our last meeting of the year and we will commence back in 2011. So for December 14, there are no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. We have a number of items at 2:30 for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency under Business Agenda Items. Public hearing, Directors of Community Planning and Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding 18 space parking exception requests by CrossFit Fitness for property located at 425 North Brand Boulevard. Directors of Community Planning and Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding professional services agreement with Shimoda Design Group in connection with the exterior design of the building for the Museum of Neon Art to be located at 212 South Brand Boulevard. Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is regarding the Alex Regional Theater Quarterly Report by Glendale Arts for the period of July 1 through September 30, 2010. Director of Administrative Services and Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding the annual financial report of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. And lastly, for the afternoon, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding final approvals for the proposed Mita Plaza Development. That evening for the city council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items, so bear with me. Director of Public Works, this is regarding approval of a final map of tract number 66730 for 12-unit new condominium subdivision at 1304 North Central Avenue. Director of Public Works, this is regarding the door and pump station. Director of Administrative Services, development impact fee revenue collected pursuant to ordinance number 5575, and expenditures by capital improvement for fiscal year ending June 30, 2010. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is request for proposals to conduct a feasibility study and prepare specifications for reconstruction of the Grandview Substation site. And tuning on, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an application for the execution of a funding agreement related to documents for funding under the Water Security Clean Drinking Water Coastal and Beach Act of 2002. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, authorization to execute a funding agreement and related documents for funding with the Water Research Foundation, this is regarding Chromium 6. City Manager, this is regarding the Ferguson contract renewal. Director of Public Works regarding Waste Conversion Technology Project, selecting a consulting firm. Lastly, under consent, Director of Community Planning, proposed Rossmoyn Historic District, authorization for funding to conduct a historic resources survey. Under adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance adding Chapter 30.37, including a number of chapters to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to urban art, and a number of action items here, Mr. Mayor. Director of Administrative Services, Finance Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the City of Glendale for June 30, 2010. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the La Paz Solar Tower Sales Agreement with the Southern California Public Powers Authority, SCAPA. City Manager, this is regarding a report, Department of Motor Vehicles, closure. We have one item under hearings. Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding confirming the intention to levy and collect assessments in the Adams Square Business Improvement District for the calendar year 2011 based on the annual report. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Clearly, we want to get a whole bunch of reports prior to the end of the year.
Okay, we'll handle them. Next item please.
At item 3B are Rosie Award Presentations.
Okay, will the Rosie Award team please come forward? Zizette Mullins.
Good evening Mayor Najarian, council members. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce the Rosie Award winners for 2010. And before I present the winners, I would like first to introduce our committee members with Sergeant Larry Bellateros from GPOA.
Larry?
Did I just torture your name? A little bit. I knew I was going to do that. Dave Cole, GMA. Craig, oh Sergeant, that's what it is. Okay, that's good. Craig Hinckley, GCA. And we have Derek Tamboro from GFFA. Thank you. The committee received 13 applications this year for nomination for the Rosie Award. After great consideration, the following employees were chosen to be the winners for the Rosie Award 2010. But before I present the award winners to you, I would like to first cover the background on the Rosie Award and why we present this award to the employees. The Rosie Award is presented annually in honor of Rosie Florist Getzweisky as an amazing city employee who devoted her life to serving others in caring and loving manner. Rosie personified the ideals of customer service and human relations. She constantly took the extra step to complete a project to assist a resident, always maintaining empathy and compassion for every person. Rosie completed her work assignment in the most professional manner possible while always treating fellow employees and residents in the city of Glendale with respect, kindness, and great sense of humor. For these reasons, all others and all others, she always be fondly remembered, we honor her legacy by honoring employees who exemplify the high level of customer service she provided the residents of Glendale. The Rosie Award is the highest recognition award given to city employees for consistent, outstanding record of professional customer service and compassion to human relations. The Rosie Awards are being given to the following employees, and I'm going to call the following employees if you please join me up front. First one is George Balterer. And we have Arsenay Isayan and Shay Hill. If you allow me, I would like to read just to show what these employees have exemplified the Rosie Award and why we decided to give it to them. First of all, George Balterer, right behind me, a project coordinator from Community Services and Parks Department. George has been with the city for approximately 21 years and George had received 43 nominations from his coworkers, from other city departments, and his supervisions and management division heads as well. Here's some of the things that his coworkers wrote about George. He's an employee of the city of Glendale who has developed most of his life to serving others in caring and loving way. His position is not reflective of one customer service, but of a lifelong dedication to bringing a vision to Glendale and enhance the quality of life for the city's childrens, teens, and adults alike. George has always understood that serving the public in this number is his priority. His kind manners, compassion helps when he talks to the public to gather their input or explain the city's position. He had pages and pages of accolades and things that he's done for the community. So I'm just going to stop right here before I go on. And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to present to one of the council members?
Council member Draymond to come down with the Rosie Award Statuette Award.
Statuette. Yeah. Uh... Mr. Mayor, I hope this is not a statuette because it's a rectangle, but it's also a beautiful award and it's a pleasure for me to present it to George because we were just talking the other day at the pool groundbreaking that we were calculating how long we have been acquaintances back in dealing with Montrose landscaping issues once upon a time. Anyway, George, thank you for all your hard work. It's a pleasure for me to be able to present this to you and I would keep both hands on and it's a little, so it doesn't get away from you. Thank you, George. Please say a few words.
Thank you very much. (applause) Well, thank you very much. I didn't ever expect to, you know, to receive such a nice award and I'm very honored and very proud to receive this. I had, fortunately, some of my family were here and my girlfriend, Kristy Pittman, and my sons, and a lot of friends, and I read through all the things, all the nice comments that everybody's said and I'm very honored and humbled actually, you know, by receiving this and all the nice things that everybody had to say. So I really appreciate all your thoughts and it's been great. I love working here and I really am dedicated to what I do and it's an honor. I know they have the, you know, the saying that said, sometimes you say, "Well, this is close enough for government work." Well, that always bothered me, you know, and I'd never thought, you know, that was something always kind of really stuck in my throat, so I always tried to exceed that and help others to see that this is not just good enough, we got to do better, you know? So I appreciate everything. Thank you very much. (applause)
I'd like to add that in addition to the plaques, that each association have actually contributed a monetary gift that will be going to each winner and so we'll be giving you that gift, maybe the check in the mail, so you'll be receiving it soon. So we appreciate the associations and their support and contribution for the Rosie Award. All right, our second winner is Arsenay. She's an administrative analyst at Community Services and Parks Department. Arsenay has been with the city of Glendale for eight years. Arsenay provides excellent customer service to Glendale nonprofit community agencies. She works with the homeless clients, property owners, as well as staff from other city departments. Arsenay's greatest customer service skills is her patience and she has empathy, compassion toward her homeless clients. She assists throughout the city's shelters plus care program. The care program is to assist formerly homeless individuals in transition to independent living. She just recently was able to negotiate through her negotiation skills and customer service, was able to negotiate with one of the property owners to take one of the homeless or previously formerly homeless individual to become a tenant at the property and also negotiate that the owner gave the individual free month of rent or the first month free of rent. And this typically doesn't happen because most property owners do not accept homeless individuals to move into their property, but through her negotiations and customer service skills, she was able to get that individual into a home and that demonstrates her excellent customer service skills and also helping out the people that are in need of help for her position. Though, I'd like to introduce Arsenay. You want to come up front?
Congratulations. We're so proud of you.
I'm honored. Thank you so much for this award. I am humbled and a little overwhelmed right now. This is truly an honor and a privilege to be standing here. I know there were a lot of nominees and it was really tough for you guys, so to be a recipient of this award, it really means a lot to me, so thank you. I'm truly, truly honored. I love working for this organization and I'll continue working here for as long as I can. I have a lot of passion for what I do, for the wonderful leaders of the city of Glendale who have given me the opportunity to work with the homeless population particularly. I can't say anything else, I'm truly humbled and honored. Thank you so much. (applause)
Mr. Mayor and Zizette, if I can briefly interrupt. Arsenay comes with her own cheering section because in addition to Arsenay, your two sisters are also employed in the city, right? And one of your sisters, Adrene, was recognized just yesterday for her five-year service to the city, so it is a family tradition here.
I didn't realize that we're here.
You want to stand up? Oh.
I expected the sisters are here somewhere, so, very nice, very nice.
We have the whole family here, that's nice. Okay, last winner, now last but not least, Shay Hill. He is Code Enforcement Inspector, he works for Community Planning. Shay has been with us for three years. Shay has also received several nominations from his coworkers. Shay is very service-oriented when it comes to external, internal customers. Shay has always kept people calm and make them smile. In another word, he's always dealing with unpleasant situations, but he has his way of having people to relate to him with his positive energy and he makes people comfortable to speak with him when they seek his assistance. Shay recently also, not too long ago, was able to help a family of six children that have lost their mother to an illness. Through his energy and through his commitment, he was able to work with the community to raise money to help the family and help the children and move into a better situation after they lost their mother. And I can't say enough about how many employees have praised him. As a matter of fact, there's an article in the paper about what he has done to help the family and the children to get together on their feet after they lost their mother. Everyone has described him to be very calm, very charming, very smile attitude and high energy and therefore, they nominated him and the committee accepted the nomination for him to be the Rosie Award winner, so I'd like to introduce Shay Hill to the podium.
Thank you so much for your service to the city and your commitment to the people of Glendale.
Appreciate it.
Please say a few words.
All right, I will. Hello to everybody. This award is definitely, it was a surprise seeing that I'm still on probation. I've only been a full-time employee for maybe seven months, so I hope this means I'm going to finish my probation here. Hint, hint, hint. Now, I'd like to thank some of my coworkers and, you know, the other departments, police, fire, anybody here that I've asked for assistance from, I've got it. I'm pretty, I can be demanding and, you know, I want stuff because I see myself as a voice for the citizens who sometimes feel they don't have a voice, so I just try to get things done and, you know, this is not just a representation of me, I think it's a representation of all of us that work for the city. So, thank you and we'll continue to try to improve on that.
Go ahead.
City council members, I'd like to thank you for letting us do this kind of award. A lot of times, people get customer service that they don't like. We've all run into it at restaurants, shopping on our own, getting stopped by a motor cop, you know, they just don't like it. So it's a pleasure to see that we had so many nominees. I think my notebook was about that big and the ability to choose just three was overwhelming. I think I can speak for my colleagues that were on the committee. It was a tough choice, but these three people exemplify what Glendale is all about. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to add my congratulations to the three recipients. They clearly do exemplify the best in public service here in Glendale and they serve as models for our 2,000 employees who provide services to our 207,000 residents. And I want to thank the committee for their hard work. I do need to single out Officer Ballustreros for just a second. He received his 20-year recognition yesterday and people say, "He looks so young." But Officer Ballustreros' motto is "A ticket with a smile." Right Larry? So thanks to the committee. Zizette, thank you.
I have one more committee member that is not with us tonight, but I'd like to personally thank her, hopefully she can hear this tomorrow, is Kelly Alexander from our office. She kept us all on track, she emailed us, she worked really hard in getting our packets together and I could say without Kelly, we would have not been able to do all this. So thank you very much for giving us an opportunity and encourage all the employees for 2011 to put their nomination in and watch out for those exemplified employee that we have in the city of Glendale. Thank you very much and thanks to the committee.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
And the next item on the agenda, please.
At item four are city council and our staff comments.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's just like this afternoon's meeting, I start to talk, everybody leaves the room. What was equally interesting is as soon as council member Friedman began to speak, everyone came back. That was, oh well, I'll give it a try. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, like to just point out for those who are wondering, it hasn't been mentioned, but just a reminder that December 7, today, December 7, is Pearl Harbor Day and we might want to make mention of that and acknowledge those living veterans of World War II and our appreciation to them, that we shouldn't allow December 7 to go and the meaning and significance of that date to go unmentioned. Secondly, I wanted to just give my congratulations to the Montrose Christmas Parade Association, the city of Glendale, and all of the other sponsors, the Montrose Rodrigo City Chamber of Commerce, the Montrose Shopping Park Association and other sponsors for putting on an excellent 34th Annual Glendale Montrose Christmas Parade. It is the official Christmas parade of the city of Glendale. It was very well attended, as it usually is, but this year probably even a little more because the weather was a little more mild than last year. And so, good job, great job, and thank you to Steve Pierce for coordinating that parade so well and all of the volunteers who participated, all of the residents of the city of Glendale that came out to stand along the parade route. There were some 40,000 people, which is really a wonderful turnout, and of course, all the Montrose merchants that stand behind their stores, their products, and their loyal customers. Secondly, I'd like to mention that I also had the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to attend the event, the Luminaria event at the Casa Adobe. so well and all of the volunteers who participated, all of the residents of the city of Glendale that came out to stand along the parade route. There were some 40,000 people, which is really a wonderful turnout, and of course, all the Montrose merchants that stand behind their stores, their products and their loyal customers. Secondly, I'd like to mention that I also had the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to attend the event, the Luminaria event at the Casa Adobe on, let's see, that was on Friday night, I believe, and that was a fantastic event. First of all, I walked in and the first thing I expected to see and was not disappointed was our own Margaret Hammond, holding court and making the event continue and operate and run smoothly. It was a terrific, terrific event. If you haven't been, first of all, it was a Christmas piano recital and all of the young children that were there to play the piano, the antique piano at the Casa Adobe. It was just fantastic. Nothing but smiling, beaming faces of the parents who were there to watch their children, and it really was a lot of fun. If you didn't get a chance to go, put it on your calendar for next year. It's one of our great historic venues in the city and a terrific event. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to attend the Christmas tree lighting at Kenneth Village the same night. It's been, I think you all know, it's a very busy time of the year for public events. Very well-attended, I was happy to see that. The Merchants Association there put on a terrific event. They had choir, the a cappella choir from Hoover High School. The merchants were there, residents were there. It was a terrific hometown event, just exactly the way you'd want to see it. Nice tree lighting and refreshments and a great way to boost the promotion of one of our terrific retail districts. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Just speaking of Pearl Harbor Day, I know exactly where I was when the word came over Pearl Harbor was born. Although I was only two years old, my father was pouring concrete along the side of the house when it came over and he carved the date in the concrete. And I was up in Glen Oaks Canyon, I don't know if it's still there where I grew up, so I do know where I was. Secondly, I'd like to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of Jack Kaiser. I knew him, spoke to him, shook hands with him, and he was very influential in this city. He didn't show up for lunch and his friends sent firefighters to his house and he had passed away at his house. He was the chair, or former chief economist of the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. He was a frequent speaker all over. I went to a number of his economic forecast meetings. One of his trademarks was being able to take complex economic data and present it in a way that the layman could easily understand it. He was sought out all over this region. You would hear him on KNX radio and the other radio stations giving his outlooks. Say that he was referenced in some 1,300 Times articles in the past since 1985, and he received about 1,000 media requests every year. Very well-known, so when I picked up the paper today and saw that he had passed on, I thought that we should honor him in some way because he even was of value to the city of Glendale from past dealings. The last thing, if people are still interested in doing it, I hope they are, we started decorating the Glendale Rose Float on Saturday. Took this picture, had about 160 students there getting their community service hours. On Sunday morning, that's the largest turnout we've ever had on the very first day in the morning. So, we'll be working the next two Saturdays. After Christmas, we'll be working every day. Those that still want to get community service hours or just happen to like doing this kind of stuff, there is the sign-up page you go to. We're just about got everything online now, so it makes it much more efficient. So, please feel free to sign up, and I'll make sure you got something very interesting to do if you show up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, a question for staff. I guess I'll ask Mr. Starbird. Where are we with the Monterey Community Garden Number Two?
I don't know.
I can answer a piece of that.
Let me refer to Mr. Drayman.
I've wanted to do that for so long. I can only add, Ms. Friedman, that I was driving by the Monterey Garden Number Two over the weekend, and I noticed that the planting is beginning.
Great.
So, I was very happy to see that. As a matter of fact, one full bed was already in process, so.
If there's still any issues outstanding with water or otherwise, could you let us know? I'm assuming that they're moving forward now with?
We'll be happy to let you know, and we will continue putting some information about it, updates about it in your packets on the bi-weekly.
So, are the gardeners all moving in now?
They are in the process of the selection, so.
Okay. Terrific. So, those of you who have been asking, the garden is back on track, and hopefully by spring, everyone will have their vegetables and flowers coming in.
Thought I was able to answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
And if the people who were there when I went by that had planted that bed were not once selected, then we have poachers, so.
A little bit of civil disobedience. And then, it's the time of year where there's so many events that we kind of have to split up, so I was going to mention a few of the events that I went to this week. First, there was the launch of the diaper drive, which if you hadn't heard about it, this is a joint project. It's put on by the Domestic Violence Task Force of Glendale, which has teamed up with a group which I believe is called Give a Mom a Hand. And the Domestic Violence Task Force is made up of a whole lot of groups and individuals. Neighborhood Legal Services is sort of spearheading it. Our own Commission for the Status of Women is involved. The Glendale Police Department is intercalated to the group, the YWCA, Path Achieve, and several other groups. And what they're doing is they're collecting diapers, and they're going to be doing this through December. Something I didn't know is that diapers are not covered by food stamps or welfare, and diapers can cost as much as $12,000 a year. So, for a young family, that's quite a lot of money, and it's hard for people, you know, who are economically disadvantaged, of which there's more and more in this economy unfortunately, to be able to afford diapers, which are pretty much a necessity if you have a young child. So, what we're doing is collecting diapers all over Glendale, and unfortunately, I don't know that all of the drops. I know that there are a couple of drop boxes here in City Hall. There's one downstairs, I believe, or somewhere in City Hall downstairs. And there's also one in the police station and several other locations around town. It's a great way to inexpensively give something that really means a lot to people. So, if you are so inclined, pick up a bag of diapers, any type, for any age, and drop it in the box, and you'll be doing a real favor to a young family or a young mom. I also attended the Christmas party for the Glendale Historic Society, which was held at our own historic train station. It was fabulous. They had the whole place decorated, and they were giving tours. They had a young man who was stamping tickets, all dressed up in period garb. There were women in Victorian outfits, board members in Victorian outfits, and they were giving tours of the station. I had never been to the back of the station. There's still an old scale that you can put luggage on, that you have to move the, you know, the weights around to do the reading, and it was a wonderful party. It was very well-attended, and I want to congratulate all of the members of the Historic Society, particularly the board and the committee that was involved in planning the party. It was really a success. I also attended the Adams Square Holiday Party, which was a great event for the family. There were, I went there and there must have been 500 children there. It was incredible. The line for the rides went around the block. So, they had a great event. They already, I was there maybe, I think it went from 1:00 to 6:00 or 7:00. I was there maybe at 3:00 or 4:00, and they had already run out of hot dogs. There were so many people there, and they were giving away food, and it was just really a lot of fun, and everyone enjoyed themselves. And I also just want to thank the Montrose Christmas Parade Group and the Merchants Association up there for another incredible community event. So well-attended, I mean, I see people there from all over town, and I want to thank them particularly for letting me ride in the Packard, which was so much fun, and I had never been in one before, and I could just use it as a bed. It was so comfortable. So, congratulations to all of them.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
I'd like to suggest we adjourn the meeting in honor of the service personnel who were killed on December 7th. I think that would be appropriate. Lots of holiday celebrations, departure plaza, tree lighting ceremony was great with loads of kids, and then the Montrose Christmas Parade was great as usual. Thousands of people attend, so much fun, and poor kids. Then I also did the menorah lighting at the Galleria. The local Habad community every year lights one of the menorah candles. And then the Armenian Cultural Foundation had a tremendous event in Beverly, at the Beverly Hilton in Beverly Hills with over 1,000 people in attendance. And I wanted to ask you, Mayor Najarian, do you plan to put the executive bonuses, administrative policies on the agenda?
Yes, I was going to ask that we get a full report on the administrative policy manual and get a better understanding about what that document is and how it's created and what role the council plays in modifying or approving any of the policies contained therein.
The mayor just told you, so the public knows I do not agree with putting it on the agenda. That's within the prerogative of the city manager.
All right, with two people.
I know, I know the policy. Understated.
I'm letting the public know.
Yeah, I oppose it.
Two council members want something put on an agenda, that's good enough. Then I'd like to just take, quickly, just go through the SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, had a economic summit, and ironically and unfortunately, it was Jack Kaiser's last presentation. He was there and he sure looked good. You just never know in life. He was at the top of his game, and over 300 business leaders attended, including two ex-governors, Governor Ducrejon and Governor Davis, and, you know, hours of testimony and questions and answers and so forth. But some of the things that are particularly striking, I thought, was that in this eight-county Southern California area, this region, we have 775,000 manufacturing workers. So, 775,000 jobs directly employed in manufacturing, and that is actually third in the nation. The number-one manufacturing state is California, followed by Texas, followed by Southern California. So, I thought that was striking. It's sort of a myth that there are no manufacturing jobs left and we have to move on, but in fact, that's the reality. There was a major emphasis on beating the canal, and that, for those of you that haven't read or heard, the Panama Canal is being expanded, making it wider and more able to handle some of the large super ships, container ships, tankers, et cetera. And so, approximately 500,000 jobs here in Southern California directly tied to that port, to the port of LA and the port of Long Beach, and directly tied to international trade. So, it's just a sort of regional approach to try and increase the ability for, well, the ability to beat the canal, quite frankly. I was sort of commenting it's going to be difficult. Port of Savannah, Norfolk, there's a lot of ports on the East Coast that are definitely going to expand, and some ships will go through the canal and go onto the East Coast, but that still leaves everything west of the Mississippi, right into the central part of Midwest. So, it's a regional approach to do what we can to ensure that those jobs stay here in Southern California and goods are able to move through our ports and on into the interior markets. It's a great seminar. I was very impressed with, actually, I was very impressed with both of the ex-governors' opinions and some of their insight. That's it.
Thank you. Briefly for myself, yesterday was the open house for the new MetroLink Guardian Fleet vehicles. These are new state-of-the-art cabs for the MetroLink line. They are built in South Korea by the Hyundai Rodem Company. They've got energy-absorbing sections in the front and the back, very comfortable, high-back chairs, outlets throughout the cars, spacious restrooms, great facilities for bringing your bicycles onboard. So, those new MetroLink cars are going to be out there. We had a groundbreaking for the pool that we'd been talking about for a while last week, and we've been promised that the kids are going to be splashing June 1st in the pool. So, we have something to look forward to. Congratulations on that. Also, you may have seen some wrecked vehicles throughout the city, on the Medians in Glen Oaks and on Verdugo. Those cars are there as a reminder to all of us that we should not be texting, we should not be playing on the iPod, we should not be on our cellphones while we're driving. It just takes a few moments of distraction to cause a serious accident that could injure you, your passenger, pedestrians, lead to large fines and possibly jail time as well. So, if you see those cars out there, those are placed on purpose under the Driven to Distraction Program with which we received, for which we received a funding grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety. And that's all I have. Anything from staff? Okay. Thank you. Before we go to the consent items, I promised the representatives of Verdugo Hills Hospital that we would move their item up and try and get them out before 7:00, so we're running just a bit late. But if we could hear item 7, please.
Seven?
I'm sorry, item nine.
At item 9A, it's a hearing, city attorney regarding proposed issuance of health facilities revenue note, Verdugo Hills Hospital, Series 2010, in a principal amount not to exceed $10 million. At 9A1 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of Series 2010 note.
I'll open the public hearing. Sansone?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. The Glendale Municipal Code's Health Facility Revenue Bond authorizes the council to issue revenue notes, bonds and other financial obligations to qualified health institutions to assist such facilities to provide essential services to residents in the city. The item you have before you would approve the proposed issuance of the Health Facility Revenue Note 2010 for Verdugo Hills Hospital. The hospital is a nonprofit corporation. It meets the criteria to qualify for tax-exempt financing under the Glendale Municipal Code. In this request, the hospital has asked the city to assist it in providing funds in an amount not to exceed $10 million. The purpose of the note is fourfold: to refund the note of 2005 in the amount of $5 million, to refinance a financing lease, to finance or reimburse certain costs for seismic retrofitting improvements and other major renovations to the healthcare facility, and to pay the expenses in connection with the issuance of the 2010 note. The issuance of the note is document-intensive and involves the coordination of a working group, including the borrower, the lender, the bank, and the city as issuer, and a few of the documents are still in final stages. So, we've passed out an errata sheet which indicates recent amendments to two of the documents that the city would be asked to sign. The amendments are minor cleanup items and not substantive. Should any substantive changes be proposed after the conclusion of this hearing, we will return to you for further approval. And finally, it is important to note that the city will not be incurring any debt or liability for repayment, and it doesn't pledge any of the faith and credit of the city. It's payable only from the loan payments made by the hospital as borrower. Transaction is structured as a pass-through of all obligations, and neither the city nor its officers or employees will be obligated personally or in their professional capacities to pay the principal or interest on the note. Finally, the city's costs and expenses to prepare the issuance of the note will be fully reimbursed by the hospital. In the audience are certain personnel who are available for questions. Cynthia Truesdale, Chief Financial Officer of the hospital is present, as well as Bob Souchard, Rebecca Edelstein of Davis Wright Tremaine, who are council for the hospital, Tom Vandiver of SNR Denton Bond Council, and finally, board member Carl Roggio, as our former mayor, is also board member of the hospital. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I and Bob Elliott will be available to answer questions as well.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to emphasize the point that Chris made toward the end of her presentation. She mentioned earlier the request was for the city to provide She mentioned earlier, the request was for the city to provide funds. As she notes, we don't provide the funds. We serve as a mechanism so the hospital can get a tax-exempt status on their bonds. And as she noted, there's no liability on the city, we don't provide them with any money, they completely cover our costs. This is a mechanism used by many, many communities across California so that the hospitals in their communities can provide public services and raise funds in tax-exempt status. I believe we also have bonds that we have assisted for Memorial Hospital in Glendale as well.
That's correct.
So, very common mechanism, and this is a process for the hospital to take advantage of tax-exempt bonds, but again, no liability, no obligation, no debt of the city, and no cost to the city.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any cards. I will close the public hearing. Mr. Weaver?
I'll move 9A1.
Back in. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. So let's go back to item 5.
At item 5A through G are consent. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I have a request to pull 5C.
Mayor, I'll remove, move the remainder of the consent items at 5.
Okay, Ms. Friedman?
I don't want to pull the item, but if you'll just allow me a quick indulgence, I wanted to just acknowledge one of the items so that the community knows about it, because I think it's very important, which is that on the consent calendar, which hopefully is about to pass, is the updating of our bicycle master plan as well as the installation, the design and installation of citywide bike racks. And this is part of our effort, of course, to make the streets safer for all modes of transportation, as well as to encourage people to get out of their cars and to use their feet and their, well, I guess just their feet, to get around town a little more. So I just want to let people know that that's in progress, and it's something that I think will be a great benefit to the city, and I look forward to those bike racks coming around town and to the master plan with hopefully more sharrows and more bike lanes of all types.
Duly noted. Mr. Quintero?
I also wanted to comment on it. I'm very happy that we're moving forward, maybe my imagination, but I see more and more bicyclists on the city streets, and some of these bike racks are just fantastic. I mean, they're literally works of art. How are we going to go about deciding where they go?
I think if your city attorney was here, he'd probably suggest we pull this item.
Yeah, let's pull.
We're going to have further discussion about it.
Let's pull.
And we're getting past just consent.
I'd like to pull 5.
I was hoping he was listening.
If his microphone were on, he'd recommend.
I'd like to pull 5G.
I recommend we pull the item.
Okay, what's going?
I'll second the rest of the consent.
5G. Mr. Weaver moved everything except 5C and 5G.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. 5C, Margaret Hammond. If you'll read that into the record, please.
At item 5C, Chief of Police Regarding Urban Area Security Initiative, Grant-Funded Installation of Video Downlink Equipment for the Police Department. At 5C1 is a resolution dispensing of competitive bidding and awarding contract to Broadcast Microwave Services, Inc., for the installation of three mountaintop downlink receiver sites.
Thank you. Margaret?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I am a 50-year resident of Glendale, of Adams Hill, actually. Never lived anywhere but right there. Anyway, what I'm coming forward at this time is following the newspaper articles regarding crime in our city, and we keep denying whatever is happening in the city over and over, yet our front pages are full of it, and I will address some of that later on in oral communication. Right now, my particular thing is, for instance, about the robberies, the jewelry mart robberies, and the fact, yes, the police did get them, they tracked them down and so forth, but you know what really bothered me more than that, was the fact that there were no witnesses would come forward. Everybody was afraid to speak up. Now what does that tell you about our city? You know what it tells you? It tells you, when you keep saying to me, "Well, how come nobody is here," but you complaining, because every time I say to anybody that calls me up to tell me things that are happening in the city, you wouldn't believe some of the things, and I say, "Well, why don't you come forward?" You get up there. "Oh, no, uh-uh, nope, I'm not going to get up there, I'm afraid of what could happen or there will be retaliation." Now, don't say it's just me. Uh-uh, there it is, right in the newspaper, on the front page. People are afraid to come forward, and that's why you don't hear from anybody. It's unbelievable in Glendale to hear that. And I, myself, I sometimes am very, keep my mouth shut, rather than to get into things that I might have a lot of problems over. Let me tell you, it's pretty hard to do. But as a matter of fact, when I saw the crowd up front, I didn't know if it was a fan club for me or a lynch squad, but anyway, I'm just saying, this is one of the reasons that people will not come forward. They're afraid. They're saying, "Yeah, well, if I say anything and I do this or that, and they'll know where I live, or they'll know that's what I said and that I caused a problem." Over and over, I have people whose neighbors caused them problems when they try to complain about something, that they have a valid reason.
Margaret, this is about some microwave.
I'm saying, it's a very good idea to have this.
Oh, you do.
And hoping, hey, hey, and hoping, it's my five minutes, and hoping that it's going to improve.
It's not five minutes, it's three minutes, and it has to be on the.
Well, I had, well, here it was.
It has to be on the subject matter here.
Well, the subject matter is, I'm hoping that this will help improve communications for the police department and will bring people forward to express their concerns. If that's going to happen, that's what it says, that they're going to have more communication. I think that's what it means, or am I wrong? Anyway, okay.
I'm going to let you read this report and decide whether your comments were on the point.
Were in, oh, oh, really?
I won't make that decision myself.
Oh, well, you can make the decision, I don't mind. Thank you.
Not up to me. Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Starbuck?
Mr. Mayor, suffice to say, with this equipment, we will be able to video Margaret in her front yard, from the helicopter.
Mayor, I'll move 5C1.
They're second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. 5G, please.
Director of Public Works Regarding Updating the City Bicycle Master Plan and Citywide Bike Racks. At 5G1 is a motion awarding contract to Ryan Snyder Associates, LLC, of Los Angeles, and to prepare the city's bicycle master plan update for a total not to exceed $66,531 plus $10,000 in contingencies. At 5G2 is a resolution authorizing staff to issue a request for proposals for solicitation of a contractor for obtaining, designing, installing citywide bike racks. And at 5G3 is a resolution appropriating $146,084.
Okay, we cut off Mr. Quintero.
As I was saying.
As he was saying.
So there are just some really creative, unique bike racks to choose from, and I assume at a certain point with our planning director, our public works director, we're going to get an opportunity to sort of pick and choose, or how is this going to work? I'm just afraid that some of these things are perhaps so artistic that unless they're clearly labeled bicycle rack, people won't know what they are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Quintero, we actually have, I believe we have six of these on site, and we'd be happy to show those to you. We have them up in one of our offices, and they are very, very creative designs. But part of the master plan, an integral part of the master plan, is community input, and one of the components of that community input is locations and types of facilities, whether it's just a rack or a locker or some other parking mechanism or facility for bikes. So we're going to, we're going to get community input from all over on what the preference of the bike-riding community is.
Great. Very good. Hey, we'll look forward to that.
And again, we'd be happy to show you what we have already. They are very, very interesting designs.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything about it, but since Mr. Quintero brought it up, I'm really enthusiastic about getting the bike racks out there. Someone who bicycles around town, not as much as I'd like, but still pretty frequently, one of the things that stops me a lot of times from riding places is I don't know if there's a bike rack, and, you know, so you're not going to ride your bike somewhere if you don't think you can put it somewhere safe, so this is important. Just looking at those designs, all I would say is, let's, you know, let's just keep in mind that what looks cool today might be dated, you know, in your future, and let's just, I don't know, my advice would be, let's not get too crazy, you know, these are, these are bike racks, they're, you know, a giant slice of pizza, might look great while there's a pizza parlor behind it, but when that turns into a donut shop, you know, may not be so cool. So, anyway, just wanted to say that. I'm glad we're doing this.
I'll just add one thing. I hope that bicyclists are learning the rules of the road. When they're on traffic lanes, they have to obey the same laws. They can't go speeding around corners on red lights and almost cause accidents like I got into, or taking up a whole traffic lane, looking to shoulder and going 10 miles an hour in a 30-mile zone. They have to understand and respect the same thing that automobiles do.
I think you can actually go 10 miles an hour in a 30-mile-an-hour zone on a bicycle legally. We have the police here.
Well, when you have a line of cars behind you trying to go the speed limit, and you're going 10, that isn't very polite. I don't agree.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
He's second.
Second.
G1, 2, 3.
We've all three items.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Okay, let's move on then, to the next item.
Oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. This is a three-minute portion of oral communications in which speakers may address items of general community interest. Peter Roush, followed by Leon Mayer.
Honorable Mayor Najarian and fine council members, good citizens of Glendale and neighbors. My name is Peter Roush, and I am officially the self-proclaimed town crier of the township of Glendale. But enough about me. In my official capacity as Assistant Director of the magnificent painted lady in Glendale, our doctor's house, I am prepared to make an official proclamation which could be a benefit to each and every member of the township. Let it be known that on Saturday hence, the 11th of December, the year 2010, the doctor's house will graciously open its doors between the hours of 6:30 and 8:30 p.m., whereupon the directors of the Glendale Historical Society will host the annual candlelight tour. Come one, come all, but by all means, please attend. Tasty refreshments and deliciously-prepared homemade cookies will be served in the gloriously-lighted gazebo. Music of the season will include piano, cello, and violin selections played by talented performers. All manners of illumination and lanterns will be shown from the private collection of Craig Lighthizer, and the interior will feature all shapes and colors of the newly-invented incandescent light bulb. No reservations are required, and a suggested donation of $2 in the appropriate coin of the realm is requested. Doors to the doctor's house will be opened for self-guided tours and a chance to see a beautifully-decorated Victorian home in the style of the holidays. But wait, there's more. For all fair citizens who cannot attend on this Saturday hence, there will be a repeat of the spectacle on the following Saturday, December 18th, at the same appointed hours. We are looking forward to your attendance at this celebration and for the festivities, as I guarantee, a frolicking and illuminating time will be enjoyed by all. Please accept these copies of Victorian Home Magazine provided by Doctor's House Director Sonia Montehano, just to put you in the holiday spirit. Thank you for your rapt and attentive attention.
Can we applaud for oral communication? Thank you, Peter.
Leon Mayer?
What an act to follow. My name is Leon Mayer, I'm here on behalf of the Friends at the Library, and I don't get paid, as some people have remarked to me, "How does Glendale afford to pay you for your events here?" And I don't get paid, and just about every author who we bring, and we brought some famous authors to the library, do not get paid. Now, we have two events coming up in December. On December 16th, which is Thursday, 7 o'clock at the Central Auditorium, we're going to have the West Coast icon, Leslie Bilderback. She is a famous certified master baker, she's lectured all over the country, she's not quite achieved the status of Julia Childs, but she's on her way. And the name of her book is Everything Red Cookbook, and she's going to teach people who come there, especially the ladies, how to cook all sorts of breads and biscuits and everything else, and just in time for the holidays. Now, following that event on December 20th, that'll be Monday evening, 7 o'clock p.m., we're having a special event, which we feel is a very fine event. The author is journalist Garen Hovenesian. Now, Garen's book is A Family of Memory, and it's a story of the Hovenesian family, a century of murder, memory, and the Armenian-American dream. Now, the Hovenesian family dates back to Casper Hovenesian, who survived the genocide, and his son is Richard Hovenesian, who's a professor in the United States and one of the, the founder of the American Armenian journalistic work on the genocide. He's well-known nationally. His son is Rafa Hovenesian, who was the first foreign minister of Armenia, and of course, his son is our author on the 20th December, that's Monday night, Garen Hovenesian, a journalist who's written this fine book, did they put it up there? There it is. Written a fine book of Family of Shadows. So we're looking forward to the lady who do a lot of cooking to come on the 16th, and anybody and everybody who should be interested, you don't have to be Armenian to get into the library on Monday, December 20th. We appreciate everybody coming and getting the vastness of this Hovenesian family shadow of.
Family of Shadows.
Family of Shadows, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communications, so we will take a break and move on to item 7.
Item 7, adoption of ordinances at 7A is an ordinance amending and repealing provisions of the GMC 1995 to combine the Community Redevelopment and Housing Department with the Community Planning Department and establishing the Community Development Department, offered on November 30th by Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. If there's any questions, we can ask them now, otherwise.
I will move the ordinance at 7A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
And Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Item 7B is an ordinance amending the GMC 1995, Section 4.52.040, regarding the sale of certain surplus property, surplus city property, and Section 4.52.050 regarding temporary street use, offered November 30th by Councilmember Weaver.
No cards? No cards?
Uh.
7B?
7B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
At 7C is an ordinance amending Chapter 12.44 of the GMC 1995 regarding, relating to the protection of indigenous trees and adding Section 5.08.540 to the GMC 1995 relating to the licensing of tree trimming services, offered November 30th by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, Bobby Aldesco, Assistant City Attorney, is here to provide you with a brief report of the minor changes that were requested, well, the one significant change involving the licensing. Now, essentially, given the changes requested by council, will be essentially covered by the state contractors licensing board and a couple of other cleanup pieces that he's done for this final, for the final draft of the ordinance, which is before you. He's prepared to provide you with a report if you'd like.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There was one change that we did. We basically made it such that tree service contractors licenses are required, but instead of being licensed by the City of Glendale, they will be licensed by the, by the State of California, and only if so required. This change will not affect any gardeners or any persons who engage in the routine pruning of trees or anything of that sort. Also, there will be no imposition of, of insurance requirement by the City of Glendale. However, there might be some by the state as relates to workers' compensation. And that's the primary change.
Okay, so we will defer to the state licensing authority for that. We will not create our own licensing authority.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a question. And it's a little bit off-topic, so I'm sorry. But I am curious, and I think probably people at home might be curious as well. If a homeowner hires, let's say, an unlicensed contractor of any type, and they bring in an employee who doesn't have workers' compensation, maybe doesn't have insurance, and that person's injured in the homeowner's home, would their homeowner's insurance pay for that, or would they say that they didn't do their due diligence because they knowingly hired an unlicensed contractor?
That's a, that's a legal question, and we'll have to defer that for further analysis. I haven't studied.
It's okay, I just thought maybe you would, you would know.
But the city attorney might know, because he's got more experience.
Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Friedman. Generally speaking, it's going to be dependent on the language in your homeowner's coverage. Sometimes they have exclusions for individuals who are hired by, that you hire through contractors. They may have exclusions. Sometimes it's covered. Most homeowner's coverage is pretty broad, but I couldn't say without knowing the policy itself. Hiring of an unlicensed contractor carries with it all sorts of issues involving your, for example, your requirement to, your ability to not pay them for the work they do. But the whole issue of workers' comp is generally going to be within the ambit of your insurance policy, and I'll have to, we'd have to review that.
What if you hired just some guy, some guy in the neighborhood, to trim your tree, let's say, and that guy's not a contractor, just some guy, and he falls out of the tree and is really badly hurt? Would your homeowners?
It may cover it as casual labor, and it's going to be somewhat dependent on the coverage that you have through your homeowner's provider.
I wasn't going anywhere with this, I was just curious, actually.
Thank you. I do have a card from Stephanie Landergan. Be on standby, Mr. Aldesco, if there's anything else that arises.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, City Staff. I'm Stephanie Landergan. I would like to say this is, I approve of the change that was made, but there were two other comments that I think still need your consideration. I'd like to bring your attention to them again on page three, where I would recommend that even though you have increased the ability of an individual to do work without a permit, that you might still consider limiting it to 10% of the tree as opposed to a quarter of the foliage. It's the very last definition, routine pruning. Pruning a quarter of a tree is really not considered routine. We mentioned this last time, I'd like you to reconsider that. Then the next item I'd like to just reiterate is on page 15, and it is again in that issue of penalizing a person who truly is maliciously removing trees, and, and I stand ready for the city attorney to disabuse me of anything that I am assuming here. On the very, under A, 12.44.140, imposition of building and development moratorium on property penalty, under A you have the option to take any one of the following actions against a person listed in subsection C of the section who is, is the person who perpetrated this action. However, nowhere in here does it indicate that the city will be issuing a stop work order on anything that is there. So my question is, is that under these two options, that there be a third and option put in here that would say, issue a stop work order until the matter has been resolved and a determination made. In other violations that are construction violations, a stop work order is issued until that happens. And although I think it's not the best solution, I think it would give you all another opportunity to penalize a person who's in that situation. Those are my suggestions. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to talk to you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, do you have any?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Landergan, as usual, always asks excellent questions and brings up excellent points. The issue of 10% versus 25%, of course, was discussed last week, I believe, and that's a policy decision. We can already issue a stop work order if someone is violating the code. That power already reposes in the Superintendent of Building, the Director of Neighborhood Services, and the Director of Public Work. This provision that she's pointing out is our, what I call the Death Star provision, which is really intended to deal with intentional malicious destruction of trees after the fact. It's the penalty to be imposed for, or the penalties to be imposed for that after the fact. If we're able to fortunately catch someone doing it at the time they're doing it, we can issue a stop work order at that time. Doesn't mean they're going to obey it, and there's penalties for disobeying a stop work order as well.
Okay. Mr. Quintero?
I have some questions. Actually, some of them are questions a neighbor actually asked me, and then someone else at one of the Christmas celebrations. There is a person who has a gardener, and she employs all year long, so then in the summers she does considerable amount of pruning. They're actually pine trees, they're not protected or anything. So her gardener will be able to climb those pine trees and trim away, and she's not going to have to do anything other than what she's done for the past, I guess, at least 20 years.
Nothing will have changed with respect to that, no, nothing at all.
Now, for my own personal, we're still going to, that gardener will still be operating under the two-inch maximum, or?
Only with respect to the, to the protected trees.
Oh, okay, just protected, but the pine trees and do the normal.
They can have at it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I always discourage her not to overdo it, actually, but she likes to have things tidy. Okay, I think that, that's pretty much it. It'll be pretty much the, whatever the state goes with in terms of licensing for these purposes. Thank you.
Comments? Ms. Friedman?
I just wanted to tell Mr. Quintero's neighbor that her contractor, her gardener, is almost certainly breaking the law, because I would bet that if they're trimming her tree, they're trimming other people's trees and probably are over that $1,000 a year limit, sorry, $500 a year limit, in which case they're supposed to be licensed and insured and all of that. But that's not her problem, that's their problem. That's why I asked the question about the homeowner, because I am, you know, I do have this concern in the back of my mind that one of these unlicensed contractors gets hurt or their employee gets hurt, and I just, I am concerned what happens to the homeowner. I mean, I, my job is to protect the homeowners, not to protect the unlicensed gardeners, and I'm worried about someone getting sued and possibly losing their home. So actually, maybe we should find out, because just, just to let people know that they may actually be on the hook if someone gets hurt, they're, you know, I just think it's a good point of information to let the public know before someone runs into that kind of an issue.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Friedman, that's, that's why I noted at the last meeting, I think it would be good to reference in the website where we have this ordinance, that residents should go on the California State Licensing Board's website, where they give advice to homeowners and residents about what to ask of contractors and when and why contractors should be licensed and what residents should be, should be watching out for.
That's a good idea, just to refer them there, so we don't have to do that. My comment is, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this ordinance. I think it's going to give people a lot more flexibility, and it'll also protect the trees. I am concerned about the 25%. I was thinking about it, and for mature trees, because there's still that two-inch limit, it's maybe not such a big deal, but for a young tree, I mean, I would think that 25% you could, you know, two, two inches for a young tree could be almost every branch, and I just don't think, I don't think that the idea here is to allow people to, you know, to turn young oak trees into topiaries, so, or bonsai trees. So, I would be in favor if the council chooses of modifying that to some other lower amount. 25% is quite a lot.
I just don't know how you look at a tree and say, that's 10%, 15%, 20%?
Yeah, you can't, but at least it gives some general kind of guideline.
A lot of this will be after the fact.
Well, after the fact, then, I don't, what did it look like, so how do I calculate 25%?
Oh, there's a hand up from our city attorney.
I'd just point out, you know, there is a provision in the ordinance referring to topping, and if there's any kind of cutting over about 20% of the primary scaffolding or the trunk of the tree, that would be against this ordinance. The 25% relates to the, to the entire canopy, so it's basically leaves, buds, flowers, things of that nature. But if you cut the tree itself, the part of it that is conducting, taking the water up and giving the tree nutrition, more than 20% of that, that would be against the ordinance, or including the branches and the primary scaffolding.
Okay. Well, I still have the concern, I mean, Ms. Landergan's the only landscape architect professional who's testified on this, and she's brought up that concern. Also, my other question is, how are we going to get this ordinance in the hands of the licensed contractors out there? Are we going to be able to let them know what the, what the rules are now?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had mentioned last week that part of our outreach effort to put this together was to have a meeting with tree trimmers and landscape contractors who do business in the City of Glendale that we are aware of, actually quite an extensive list and a good turnout. And we intend to do the very same thing now that the ordinance has been revised, is to bring them all back and go through this with them. And we have a pretty good list of those individuals who work regularly in the city. In regards to the 25%, for what it's worth, we went back this week again to verify at levels nationally, statewide, other cities, and I would say that up to 25% is the norm. And when we talked to the Arborist Society, they indicated that that's what's considered to be routine maintenance. And, and again, even though a tree may be all two-inch branches, you can still only take off 25%, and as, as Mr. Aldesco said, we have terms such as hat-racking, topping, and those kinds of things that prohibit you from structurally damaging the tree, regardless of its size.
I will defer to the Arborist Society, and if we could, since not every contractor showed up to your meeting, if we could maybe mail the information to those who don't, that might be a good thing.
Absolutely. And just as a, as a final note, our outreach for this, and once, once approved by the council, is going to be pretty extensive for both homeowners, for, for the contracting community. We'll have it on websites, we'll get out and reach out to people again and get the word out as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, just in summary, I think that this brings a lot of sanity to the ordinance, and it'll still protect the trees, but it definitely gives homeowners a lot more ability to take care of their trees without having to go through a whole lot of bureaucracy. So, I want to thank staff for putting together this comprehensive new ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Just want to add that, you know, this started many years ago, and the thrust was to prevent property owners from basically destroying indigenous trees and then saying, oops, or I didn't know, or the bulldozer backed over the beautiful oak tree that's been there for 100 years and knocked it down. And so I think we have, in this ordinance and in the previous ordinance, I think we have eliminated, once and for all, the ability of people to just do whatever it is that they want to do on this particular slice of hillsides, because that's mostly where the issues took place. And I think we've got a good grasp, people can build around oak trees and do lots of different things. They don't necessarily have to bulldoze everything in the, on their property.
Okay. Thank you. Now, is there a motion?
Move 7C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Item 8A, Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Maintenance of Vietnam War Memorial in Montrose. 8A1 is a resolution authorizing oversight and maintenance and modi, of maintenance and modifications to the Vietnam War Memorial in Montrose.
Thank you. Mr. Starbuck?
Yes, I'll go to George Chapchan, Director of Community Services and Parks. George?
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck. Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. As you know, the war memorial in Montrose was dedicated in 1968, and it's located in the Montrose Business Improvement District on the corner of Oceanview Boulevard and Honolulu Avenue. It currently lists 14 names of men from Montrose, La Crisena, La Canata, Flynn Ridge, and Tahanga that were killed while serving in Vietnam. Recent research by a volunteer who helps maintain the memorial led to the discovery of five names that were inadvertently left off of that memorial. The Montrose Shopping Park Association and Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce have both been contributing funds for maintenance of the war memorial for several years now, while the city has been responsible for the sidewalk around the memorial. Recent attempts to have the names of the five servicemen added to the war memorial led to some, raised some issues about the responsibilities of who maintains the war memorial and then how events are scheduled in the war memorial. There currently is no formal contract between the city or, and either organization. However, both organizations contribute $500 a month towards the maintenance of the memorial, and that goes towards replacing flowers on a weekly basis, replacing flags as necessary, and manually refinishing and maintaining the plaques for Memorial Day celebrations. But the lack of a formal agreement, again, regarding the responsibilities of maintaining it, providing input to the city on special events, and also changing of the memorial or altering it, has caused some undue confusion between the MSPA and the Monrovia, I'm sorry, the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber. As you know, the MSPA does have an agreement with the City of Glendale to administer the BID. They submit an annual budget to the city as part of the agreement to have, for the administration of the BID, a budget line item for the maintenance of the war memorial, and the BID is in there for an amount of $500. I don't believe the city has such an agreement with the Montrose City Chamber of Commerce. To avoid future issues as they relate to the maintenance and alteration of the memorial and for scheduling of special events at the memorial, staff requests city council direction to formally authorize either the Montrose Shopping Park Association or the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce to be responsible for the following. One, overseeing maintenance of the memorial, including but not limited to replacing the flowers and flags and maintaining the plaques. Two, administering modification to the memorial when necessary, for example, adding new plaques or replacing damaged plaques. And three, providing input on permit applications received by the city for events at the memorial. To note, the party responsible for the maintenance and alteration of the memorial, as you designate, shall continue to apply for a permit from the city when planning events or modifying the memorial, and will also be responsible for commenting on any permit applications received by the city for events at the memorial that are not sponsored by that party. City staff will continue again to maintain the sidewalk around the memorial. There's no fiscal impact at this point to the city with this agreement. That's the, the report. You can take any questions if you'd like.
Okay, are there any questions?
Questions?
I have a question. Let me get this straight. So, right now there's two groups that share responsibility.
In maintaining?
Maintaining, and each one contributes $500.
$500, that's my understanding, that each one contributes $500 annually.
So if we, if we designate one of those groups, will the other group continue to assist in the maintenance?
I'm, I can't speak for them at this point, but I believe they still will.
Mr. Starbuck?
Just an observation, based on a recent issue that arose. The budgets are relatively small. I would anticipate both groups will continue to support, but I think it's important that we name one group in particular who can be responsible. I think these two groups generally work well together, but there have been times when they, when they disagree on an approach, and that's where it would be good to have one group who can be responsible. Frankly, our view, when I asked, my view when I asked the staff to prepare this, was that the Montrose- that the Montrose Shopping Park generally be responsible for the Vietnam War Memorial, certainly to work in conjunction with the chambers they always have, but I think us as staff, we need to have one point of contact. Many times, it's not an issue that involves the two groups, it's an issue that involves the use of the memorial and who's responsible for setting policy for it. In that regard, the MSPA, I believe, is the one, since we have the official relationship with the MSPA, that would be an appropriate group for us to have a relationship with on this, on this item as well.
Okay, let me go to Mr. Draymond.
I have some comments, Mr. Mayor, that may help. I don't know. First of all, the, some of the history behind this is a little bit confused in the summary. This memorial was the brainchild of Don Carpenter, who was the editor and publisher of the Century Valley Ledger for many, many years. Actually, his parents founded the paper and he eventually became the man behind the paper, if you will. And when the memorial was dedicated in 1968, the paper was the primary financial resource for the construction of the memorial. In terms of its maintenance, that was primarily funded by Don Carpenter himself till his passing in the 1980s, and then from there, his widow continued to provide funds until her death. And in any case, her illness, I should say. At that point, she turned to Frank Roberts, who was alternately president of the Montrose Shopping Park Association and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber, and Mr. Montrose, a very, very influential fellow, sort of the face of Montrose in those days. And he saw to the maintenance of the memorial, sometimes with funds from Mrs. Carpenter and sometimes from money right out of his own pocket. Like many things in a small town in those days, I would say probably no one would disagree if there wasn't, if there weren't a lot of, well, with the characterization, there weren't exactly excellent records kept by Mr. Roberts, because basically, he was doing a task that needed to be done, physically maintaining the memorial, and he did that. These funds are used to replace the flags there, the flowers, maintain the site, and clean the plaques, replace the plaques, et cetera. At that point, Frank Roberts turned to the Montrose Shopping Park Association for a source of steady funding. And the idea was that the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber would pay $500 a year, and the Montrose Shopping Park would pay $500 a year. Didn't exactly work out that way over the years. So, it has been a line item on the budget that this council has accepted from the Montrose Shopping Park Association for well more than a decade, those funds. From the Chamber of Commerce, it has varied, it's been sporadic. And the reason is because that their funding source is far less predictable. You have a membership with one organization based on who chooses to join, and you have a membership with the other that is compelled to pay a membership because it's an assessment district. So, this has nothing to do with the interests of the groups or which is a better group, it doesn't, it's not about that, because the membership is essentially the same. There is an overlap. Many of the members of the chamber are also members of the Shopping Park Association, so this isn't a criticism of anybody. My suggestion, quite frankly, and I've expressed this to the city manager when I heard that this would definitely be coming back to us, is, to be very honest with you, I don't think it should be worded this way at all. So I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench into this. I don't think it should be either the Montrose Shopping Park Association or the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. I believe it should be whoever is the party the city contracts with as the liaison agency for the BID. That, over time, over the years, since the BID was created in 6668, it has been both the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber, who had the first contract there for five years, from 1968 to 1973, and it's also been the Montrose Shopping Park Association Board of Directors from 1973 to the present. I don't think it should be specifically tied to the organization that happens to be serving as the administrative body that we contract with. It should be tied to whomever the board is for the BID. And the reason for that is because that is where you'll always find the predictable source of income, because that is also the board that represents the Business Improvement District, and it will also be the group that you, we, contract with, related to not only the promotional activities there, but many of the, many of the physical aspects of the physical infrastructure in the shopping park as well. So, to me, that's who it should be tied to, rather than this merchants' association or that merchants' association. To me, it should be the governing body for the BID. Right now, that happens to be the board of the MSPA. But as you all know, since you just extended that contract, every five years, that has the potential to be a different organization. To me, that's where the responsibility should go.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Draymond, are you then suggesting that Section 1 be modified?
I am, I am, Mr. Weaver. I'm suggesting that it should be a slightly different.
It's under Section 1.
Yeah, let me turn back to that again.
Execute with both. So I think you want a substitution.
It's not that it should be both organizations, it should, it's that, in my view, it should be.
That's why I'm asking what you would like to see in it. And I served as vice president of the Chamber of Commerce and I worked with the business group too, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. And by the way, let me just clarify one other thing, Mr. Mayor, again, just to state. It has nothing to do with the two organizations. In past, in the past, I've been a member, our family's business has been a member of the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber. My father was a 40-year member of that organization, and at the same time was a member of the Montrose Shopping Park Association and served on its board in various capacities. So.
What wording would you like?
I don't know how to word it. I'll turn that to the.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, if there's agreement with, by others, to modifying this to reflect a desire to have an agreement with the organization which administers the Montrose Shopping Park BID, I'd recommend the following changes. One, to the title of the resolution, to delete Montrose Verdugo Chamber of Commerce and the Montrose Shopping Park, and just note that it's an agreement between, it's authorizing an agreement between the organization which administers the Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District and the City of Glendale for the maintenance, et cetera. First, two whereas clauses are historical, those are, I would assume, okay. The third, we could modify to provide that it is, there is no formal agreement between the city and any organization or individual for the maintenance of the memorial, which sits on public property, and whereas, it's the desire of the city to enter into an agreement with the organization which administers the Montrose Shopping Park BID for the maintenance of the memorial. And then, as Mr. Weaver suggests, Section 1 can be amended to note that the city manager's authorized to negotiate and execute an agreement with the organization which administers the Montrose BID for the maintenance of the Vietnam War Memorial, et cetera.
Do we presume that the, that in this case, the MSPA will always be, will always be interested in maintaining the memorial, despite them being the liaison of the bid, you know, the administrator of the bid? Mr. Draymond.
Well, the point in altering the motion in this way is that it doesn't matter who is the, who is, which, what organization. It could, every five years, it could be neither of these organizations. It could be another organization that comes forward, that the city chooses to award that contract to, if you will.
It's a funding source.
As the, to create the funding for the, well, to administer the BID. So it happens that it's the MSPA right now. My understanding is, and the city attorney can help to clarify this, but couldn't that be one of the, one of the requirements within our contract with, with whoever the administrative body is for the BID, just as we currently require that they do other things?
We could add it in.
Is that a budget and?
Yes, we could add it in. That would make sense. Otherwise, they would have the, presumably, the choice to decline.
Right.
This way, it's incorporated in their duties to administer.
And I don't see how you could do it any other way, because if, if the MSPA were no longer the administrative body, would they still be necessarily saddled with?
Oh, you're right.
That expense, in fact, potentially twice the expense that they're currently, or alternatively, the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce.
That's your amended motion?
That would be my amended motion. That is, if we can, if we are, if we are, if that is allowable, Mr. City Attorney, with regard to making that a part of the contract with whomever.
Once the contract, and I have to go back and look at the term to see if, I think we just amended it, I have to go back and look at the term, but certainly, we could include that maintenance obligation as part of the MSPA. It's certainly part of the promotion of the.
Execute novation.
Given the fact, I think this was the first, yeah, a war memorial.
Novation.
We can go, we can certainly talk to them about many, but if not, I hadn't heard in discussing this with staff that there was any objection to maintaining the war memorial now, even without a contract amendment, but certainly we could, at least, whether or not in the near term, but certainly at some point, we could include that language in the contract.
Motion, Mr. Draymond.
That would be amended.
It is amended, I'll second it.
Seconded. Okay. I don't have any cards on this, so let's roll, Mr. Quintero, and then, roll, please.
Yes.
Yes. Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Thank you. 8B, please.
8B, Director of Administrative Services, Finance Regarding Fiscal Year 2009-10 Results and First Quarter 2010-11 Update and Adjustments to the Adopted Fiscal Year 2010-11 Budget. At 8B1 is a motion to note and file financial status report for the period ended September 30, 2010, and at 8B2 is a resolution appropriating $23,730.
Mr. Elliott.
Thank you. Good morning, good morning. Wow.
It does feel that way, doesn't it?
Four hours and we're there.
It's been a long day already.
I assure you, this presentation is not going to be that long.
Oh, boy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we wanted to briefly go through our operating results for the fiscal year 9-10, discuss the 10-11 first quarter results, and the adjustments. How did we do in fiscal year 9-10? These are our audit numbers. You can see, we started the year with $164 million general fund budget. In the area, in the resource area, we ended the year at $158 million, and we'll get into the specifics of that in a minute, what the reductions in our revenues were. Expenditures, where we started with our balanced budget, $164 million, we had some additional appropriations through the year, primarily some carryovers and some additional costs appropriated during the year for items like the station fire. That added to our revised budget of $168 million. We ended up spending out of the $168 million, $161 million, and we also appropriated monies, if you recall, at the third quarter update last year, $2.7 million from the general fund, and transferred that to our liability insurance fund because of the mounting deficits there. Through the audit process this year, in some of the transfers that we made, the auditors requested us to make an audit adjustment, basically moving, reflecting $8 million going into the general fund and out of the general fund to comply with generally accepted accounting principles. The net effect was absolutely nothing, but it was something that they asked us to do. The end of the year, we ended with a $5.2 million deficit in the general fund. How did that come about? As you can see, as I mentioned earlier, property taxes came in fairly, significantly under what our estimate was. At the end of the day, the primary issue with that was our delinquency factor was up to about 7 percent, primarily people unable to pay their property taxes. So the net result is the city doesn't receive the tax timely. Now, ultimately, we will get most or all of that at some point in time, we just did not get it in the normal business cycle. Recall, we get our property tax primarily in two payments in December and April, pretty much when we pay our own property taxes, so that we get about 80 percent, 40 percent in December and 40 percent in April. So it's a kind of a skewed revenue, it's tough to forecast at times, so we ended the year significantly under. Sales tax, it's no secret, our economy has been struggling, and that's reflected in our, in our sales tax. Also, within that category, we ended up with a large triple flip adjustment, not to get into the gory details of the triple flip, but that was part of the economic recovery of '04-'05, where we basically gave up a portion of our sales tax to the state. They then pledged it for revenue economic recovery bonds. We then get a backfill of property tax, which to us is still categorized as sales tax, but it has some different indices in terms of how it changes up or down. We get an advance of that property tax, and then they trued up at the end of the year, we had a large negative adjustment of over $700,000. Net result is, sales tax was significantly under. One other item you can see here is the use of interest and money, that's basically our interest earnings on the portfolio. As you follow Mr. Baruki's reports, we're down to about 1.5 percent interest earned on our 400-plus million-dollar portfolio, so the interest declined significantly, significantly throughout the year. Net result is, our revenues were about $6 million under what our estimate was. On the expenditures side, as I mentioned, we started the year at $164 million budget. We had subsequent appropriations of about $7 million. Again, a lot of those were carryovers from the previous year and other appropriations within the year. You can see in the detail where every department ended up. The good news on this slide is, out of a total of $171 million, the departments ended up spending $163 or $7 million under our budgeted final budget. That goes to the efforts that the city put forth in the hiring frees and all the other budget cuts that went on through the year. You can see the percentages of the departments, most of which were well under the budgeted amounts. So with the deficit, where did that leave us? You can see, we started the year at about $55 million in our unreserved fund balance, which I recall was about 33, 34 percent. With the deficit folding into that, we ended the year at about $49.3 million. That is right at the 30 percent threshold for our reserves. Also notable is the advance, the reserved part of the fund balance, which is basically the reservation of fund balance to the money that's been loaned to the redevelopment agency over the years, so we have to pull that out as a reserve portion. Total fund balance is $120 million, although the $49 million is really the portion that we considered as a reserve. Moving on to 10-11, some of the items, again, our revenues and expenditures are tracking pretty much as we've expected. We still continue with the hard hiring frees that generate significant savings within the general fund at any given day, you know, $4 to $6 million because of the vacant positions. We're not proposing any changes at this time, although we are really monitoring the budget probably closer than I ever have in my career, and I am remiss to have my staff as all here in support of our efforts tonight. We have created a lot of new tools in which to monitor our revenues, and we are employing those to. revenues work, primarily property tax, we don't get anything until December, sales tax is, is a little bit skewed throughout the year, this, the first quarter still has some accrual adjustments from, from the audit and year-end processes, so, right now, we're a little bit ahead of where we were last year in terms of revenues, so there's, there's not a whole lot to report at this point in time. Expenditures were considerably under our 25% of the year, you can see the detail by department, all departments are doing quite well and holding the, holding the reins in terms of spending money. So this time, we're not recommending any adjustments to the general fund, we do have a couple of minor appropriations for the fire grant fund and the library grant fund of about $23,000 in total, and with that, available to answer any questions you may have.
Can I do have a speaker on this? Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members, my name is Mike Mohill, Long Term Resident of Glendale. Got a couple of questions on the, on the budget here, on the unrestricted reserve account. On page three of the report, it's reported as of June 30, 2010, the unrestricted reserve fund balance is 100, excuse me, $49.3 million. So far this year, we have spent more of the reserves, can anyone on this dais please tell the public how much the unrestricted reserves are as of November 30, 2010, and can provide the documents supporting that number? How much does the state, and the charter requires us to keep at all times, in the unrestricted reserve account? I'd like to make this an Oral Public Record Act request for the documents to support the city unrestricted reserve account. Certainly, you should have this information at your fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. And I have a question. So currently, we're on track for the first quarter, we're at 23.6% of our expenditures compared to our allocated budget, is, is that on track, or is there a skew in the each quarter? Is one quarter doing more of the expenditures than any other one historically?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if you look historically, typically expenditures are fairly straight lined throughout the year, however, this quarter is usually higher than most, only because it involves the summer quarter and a lot of hourly employees for park and recreation activities, so this is typically the highest quarter in which you would see expenditures. So as I noted, we're considerably under the 25% straight line, as I noted at the managers' meeting last week, if we just forecasted the 40.9 million, we would be significantly under our, our budget at this point in time, in terms of savings for the year.
Mr. Starburt.
Mr. Mayor, the, the, the concern at this point is really more about revenues than about expenditures. I would anticipate that this year will be much like last year, we will, in all likelihood, come in considerably under budget in expenditures, I'm confident of that, the numbers are reflective of that. The piece that's more difficult to anticipate is what's likely to happen with our revenues, especially in light of the fact that last year, we continued to see a slide in many of our, many of our critical revenues. So the work that we've done this past month has really been to give ourselves some assurance that the revenue projections that we have are reliable at this point in the year, and Bob Elliott and the budgets team have put in a considerable amount of effort to look at revenues last year, estimates this year, to give ourselves some assurance that we believe we are on target with respect to revenues. We don't want this year to have happened what happened last year, which is, we get down toward the last part of the year, and lo and behold, we realize our revenues are continuing to slide. So we, we have literally been looking at this year's revenue estimates, taking into consideration what happened last year, because our numbers last year become our basis for estimating this year, and if they were lower than we thought last year, the concern is, are they too low this year? And Bob and Jason Bradford and the budget team have spent a considerable amount of time evaluating those, and although I was concerned, we may have to come in with some mid-year budget adjustments this year to make sure we balanced, they were confident that at this point in time, we're okay. So the real focus really is on the revenue side, because that's where we have the most difficulty in making sure that our estimates are going to hold for the year. Expenditures will generally be fairly consistent from year to year, revenues change a great deal, we receive the least amount in the first half of the year, and most of the revenue flows in the last half of the year, that's the way property taxes flow. I might also make a comment about Mr. Mohill's questions. The city's charter requires that we have a restricted reserve within the general fund equal to half of our estimated property tax revenues. That was established back at a time when the city didn't have the kind of, of reserves that it does today, and so it was quite common back in those days, that it, that because your property tax revenues were, in those days, probably the largest single revenue source in the general fund, and because property taxes flow with the first payment in December after you make your payment, then the second, usually half of the revenues flow after April when you make your second payment, your, your expenditures in the first half of the year are far in excess of the revenues that you take in. In the old days, when property taxes were the number one revenue source, cities would have to borrow money to get themselves through the first six months of the year. Being conservatives they were, our forefathers said, we want to always have working capital in the general fund equal to half of our property tax revenues, so we won't have to borrow as we go through those first five months of the, of the year when it's lean. We are far beyond the need for that kind of a working capital fund, we not only have a very large, considerable, I'll call it a co-mingled working capital, our 400-plus million-dollar investment portfolio is essentially working capital, but the general fund has gone far beyond that charter-required reserve, if all you consider is just the actual cash balances in the general fund. And the CAFR, which is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, reflects the cash balances and the reserves as of July 30, and current numbers on a month-to-month basis will show that our working capital needs have not taken us considerably below the existing reserve balances.
Comments? And just so I'm clear, the amount that we need now to adjust is only the $23,000.
That's correct. That's correct. Let me, let me make another comment, we have traditionally, from year to year, had a relatively large number of what's called carryover items at the end of the year's budget, that then flow into the next year's budget, and those are items that the departments have become accustomed to, if they can't, they can't get something done in, in the earlier year, and they want to hold the resources that have been allocated for that work over the next year, we've been fairly liberal about allowing that in years past, it's been a tradition in Glendale. We are really clamping down on that, and frankly, attempting to end that practice, only because it makes it very difficult in these very lean times to really track adequately the total amount of expenditures in a given year. And so with, with this year, the department heads, I think, are feeling some of the pain and suffering of that, because they've, they've had that, that latitude in the past, we are setting some fairly strict standards for those items that will be allowed to be carried over from year to year, and generally have to be legitimately encumbered, subject to a contract, in order to do that, so you're going to see the numbers for adjustment each year much, much smaller than they have been in the past.
This is a use it or lose it.
This is, well, we don't want to get into that either, because the departments, well, the departments, I will tell you, I'm very proud of the fact that last year, even after all of our budget adjustments and all the tightening down, the departments came in $7 million under the approved budget. I mean, that is considerable in these times. Large part of it is the, is the hiring frees, as Bob noted, but that's having a huge effect on the departments, that means at any one given time, 80 full-time positions in the general fund are not being filled, and they cut across every department practically in the city. The departments have even gone beyond that and have found ways to conserve and economize to bring it in even below budget. So we, we no longer have an attitude of spend it or lose it, the departments know that to the extent that we can reduce costs and have savings, then that's going to assist the entire city keeping a budget balance. I know they want to get the work done, but I think it's a recognition that in these days, it's particularly important that we be able to have good numbers to estimate our budgets on and to manage by, and this practice of carryovers has just been a last little tradition that frankly, doesn't give us the kind of, of accuracy I think we need in managing our budgets, so the departments have been very supportive of that, although it's, it's changing the, the way they've been able to, to practice budget management in the past, but I think it's a very good move, and I think they, they understand that, and everybody's going to pull their weight.
Thank you, this is a, Stephen File and a resolution.
8B1 and 2.
Motion to note and file and resolution appropriating the $23,700. Motion by Mr. Weaver, can make both of them. There a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to, since we're back to oral communications. Robert Buniatian, Margaret Hammond, Mike Mohill, and Sharon Weisman.
Saying no.
Mr. Mohill, okay. Mr. Buniatian.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Robert Buniatian, and I'm a resident of Glendale, and I have a prepared statement to read. Last week's city council meeting brought out one of the worst in our local government, the threat to take action of eminent domain to expand the Americana. To quote Mayor Najarian from the Glendale news press, Mayor R. Najarian urged the property owners to negotiate, and if that fails, he said, a fair price for the properties could be determined in court. Even so, there will be no losers in the deal, he said. This is simply our government being involved in chronic capitalism, our local government promoting corporate welfare and an incestuous relationship between government and corporation. Hypocrisy screams aloud when council members like Friedman and Najarian would talk of freedom and choi, freedom of choice and liberty, but they would not hesitate for a second in putting a gun on a person's head with the finger on the trigger and forcing the transfer of property from one entity to another because the Americana has become the eat place. But alas, this is all for the benefit of the residents. Mayor Najarian might argue that what we are doing is all legal, but the imperfections of our Supreme Court should not cloud your judgment of what is right and what is wrong. This is simply wrong. Mayor Najarian, you might argue that this is the benefit of our city, but should the perceived benefits be gained from the transfer of property from one private owner to the next under the threat of violence? Mayor Najarian might argue that the property owner will get a fair market value for his property. Putting aside the subjective definition of fairness, Mr. Najarian mixes market value for a property to what someone could value his own property. Mr. Najarian, would the market price of the property include sentimental value? Would it include the present value of all future earnings of that property? Contrary to your notion of no losers, Mayor Najarian, we are all losers with what you are doing. What you are involved in, what we, what you are involved in is pure and simple further degradation of private property rights. However, let's say the hesitations mentioned already are put aside, this is still one hell of a negotiating position you put the property owners in, they either negotiate under the threat of violence, or they negotiate under the threat of violence. Mayor Najarian, the threat itself is an act of belligerence. I propose to condemn Mayor Najarian's house and make it a foster home, where we could raise a future Max Bank, a Niels Bohr, or a Richard Feynman, for they will be more beneficial to our community in one hour than you and I will be in 100 lifetimes. And of course, when I wrote this, a friend of mine asked, well, where is the threat of violence here? Well, if you have a case where the judging court says, your house is, your property is valued at $10, yet the property owner thinks the house is valued to himself at $15, and that, and the case is against the property owner, and he refuses to move, of course, he will be thrown out of the property by the police, so the threat of violence is real and it exists. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Sharon Weisman.
Good evening, again, Your Honor, members of council, city staff and audience. Okay, December the 7th, we should remember our troops in Afghanistan, they're going to be there over Christmas, so any way you can help them and think about them, there are places to send, which I have done already, sent several boxes. Anyway, I'm on to our dear Mr. Caruso, the thousand-pound gorilla, and here he is, shaking the cages again, shaking his cage again, and so therefore, the city council is feeding him bananas to quiet him down or to do whatever, in the form of taking away Mr. Patel's business, thriving business, and giving the property to Mr. Caruso. Does this sound familiar? Shades of a few years back, $77 million of property was bought with taxpayers' money and given to Mr. Caruso family trust, free and clear. And if I remember correctly, seeing on the front page of the paper, the sales tax income from that development of Mr. Caruso's, not the other businesses, I'm talking Mr. Caruso's income, has not met expectations, which the group that I was involved with and sued by Mr. Caruso had said from the beginning was not going to be met. And he had to buy condos himself in March so that the, the sales would meet the 50%, so that the owners of the first group of condos could move in, proceed to move in. Now, after Mr. Patel has stated he did not want to sell his property, the city is going to go through the same old manipulation, taking away his property. Doesn't sound like the American way of fair business dealing to me, and several, and I know several of my friends and myself were sued by Mr. Caruso, and I was showing what he, what type of person he is, because we stated that Harvard, now Caruso Way, and Orange Streets would be closed, and that he would put up neon billboards, giant billboards and Eiffel, giant neon Eiffel Towers, and he denied that and got away with it, because he's doing it today. I mean, we're, we're standing there and go like, oh my God, how could we be sued? And he went into court and denied he was going to do it. Now, this is not really proper at all, and Mr. Patel even has an agreement with him regarding Orange Street, he came here and begged you to look at the letter that Mr. Caruso had given him, and Mr. Caruso would not honor that agreement regarding the trash buckets and whatnot on Orange Street, near the Golden Key Hotel Motel. I mean, I just think this is outrageous. We're right back, is this fair? I mean, I don't think any of you would like to have your homes taken and just said, hey, my cousin wants that home, I want it, I'm going to get it for $100,000. Don't forget that it cost the city $4 million for a little hunk of property for ANC, and not only just $4 million, there was $12 million in the long run, that the city, in various ways and forms and gifts, ended up giving to the ANC, so maybe Mr. Patel ought to be able to get at least that amount. He came here and begged you to look at the letter that Mr. Caruso had given him, and Mr. Caruso would not honor that agreement regarding the trash buckets and whatnot on Orange Street, near the Golden Key Hotel motel. I mean, I just think this is outrageous. We're right back. Is this fair? I mean, I don't think any of you would like to have your homes taken and just said, "Hey, my cousin wants that home. I want it. I'm going to get it for $100,000." Don't forget that it cost the city $4 million for a little hunk of property for ANC. And not only just $4 million, there was $12 million in the long run that the city, in various ways and forms and gifts, ended up giving to the ANC. So maybe Mr. Patel ought to be able to get at least that amount, the same. That would be fair. And maybe Mr. Patel would be happy to do it. But I mean, if Mr. Patel wants to stay in business and have his income for his family ongoing, I don't think he should be denied that in the American way of life. And then the news press article revealing the public figures for the last 10 years on the information of the management, the bonuses that have been going on for the last 10 years and has been finally printed up. I guess at this point, it really appears that maybe the Bell City manager and the council took lessons from Glendale, from the Glendale city government, on how to go about getting bonuses and whatever for themselves pensions. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members and staff. I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale, and speaking tonight as an individual, I guess under the category of politics makes strange bedfellows. While I'm very pleased to hear how successful the Americana brand has become, and extremely happy that many who don't live in Glendale come to spend money here, I have some concerns regarding the proposed use of eminent domain to obtain two adjacent properties to add to it. Ideally, the property owners will come to an agreement on a fair purchase price without governmental involvement. For a city to step in to essentially transfer land from one private owner to another is troubling and a misuse of the eminent domain concept, in my opinion. The appearance of favoritism or graft is a possibility, especially a view of the recent fraud exposed with the ADI redevelopment projects. I urge the council to exercise extreme care, to be circumspect in all dealings with all developers. I'm also concerned about the loss of an affordable, family-oriented hotel in Glendale. The city needs a variety of options, not just the luxury high-rise hotels like the new Embassy Suites or the crime-plagued motels along the eastern part of Colorado Boulevard. It's also a bit troubling that lawsuits filed by the potentially displaced property owners are still percolating through the legal system from the Americana development and operations. I've been dismayed at the successful litigation against the city in the past, and have wished for better information to gauge if Glendale is successfully sued more often than other cities. Perhaps the city could ask a Glendale Community College professor to devise a student project to determine the lawsuit payout per capita for cities in California, to see how we compare to other municipalities. It might be the start of a joint project to develop more complete quality-of-life indicators for the city, too, because I think there are economists and statistical analysis experts available that could give us more data than we have. And lastly, I'd like to note that I think some of the extreme language used by some previous speakers, such as analogies of guns to the head and violence, is completely irresponsible, even though I share his concern about the use of eminent domain in this case. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Mohill is gone. That was the only other card. Comments? Ms. Friedman.
I think that despite the way that the Americana issue last week was characterized in the press, if you actually watch the meeting, council had a lot of the same concerns, which is why I felt a lot better about taking the vote when Mr. Drayman asked Mr. Patel, one of the property owners, to come up to the podium and asked him directly and said, "So are you saying you're against selling your property?" Now, if I'm remembering this incorrectly, please someone tell me, because it's late. And he said, "No, I just want to get a fair price." So if he had said, "No, under no means, so I want to sell my property, this is my business, yada, yada," you might have had a different vote. You may not have, but you may have. But he didn't say that. He said unequivocally, "I'm not against selling my property. I want to get a good price." Not quoting him, paraphrasing. So I just want everyone to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Thank you. And I just want to say that fair can be defined in one of two ways in this instance. That's a price agreed to by both parties at an arms-length transaction, or to be determined by a jury of members of Los Angeles County in a Los Angeles County Superior courtroom. And if you think that our court system is corrupt, then you shouldn't be addressing us, you should be picketing Washington, D.C. Mr. Starburg.
Mr. Mayor, I need to point out, because the media, the media as well as some speakers last week seemed to continue to carry the theme that this was an action utilizing eminent domain. It is not. That matter is not before you at all. And that question may come up at some point in the future in this process, but that was not the matter before you last week, that is not the matter currently before you, and that is not the process that you have initiated. You've initiated a process to request proposals from property owners, the studio, Mr. Patel, Mr. Caruso, who have a right under redevelopment law to submit proposals for development of that property. That is the process you have commenced. Whether or not that leads eventually to eminent domain completely remains to be seen. In the meantime, they all have their rights to submit their proposals to you.
So there.
Yeah, but you know, let me just say, if it was truly open and transparent, then we would have let anyone go for the proposed RFP. Instead, it was restricted to Mr. Caruso and the two property owners. So let's be clear about that. We could have gone out to the general public, if you want to call it that, and have them submitted options for that property. And maybe that's what we'll wind up doing, but that would certainly be the fair process.
Mr. Drayman.
One more voice to be heard from Mr. Mayor, although I barely have a voice today. It's true that that may even be the direction that we end up going, but that isn't going to change the argument that we're hearing from the public, whether it's Mr. Patel that would have a winning proposal, or Mr. David has a winning proposal, or Mr. Caruso, or some fourth or fifth or sixth party. The basic argument that we're hearing, and the basic comment we're hearing, is that in essence, the accusation is, we're assisting some other parties to come take away Mr. Patel's business, or Mr. David's property, and so forth. I find it kind of amusing. I addressed maybe 30 emails that came in over the weekend on this subject stating that we had invoked eminent domain, and of course, that hasn't happened. No one up here, even in, I'm not sure how that got rolling, except for perhaps the press and people that didn't quite understand the process. But you're quite right, Councilmember Friedman. That is exactly why I asked that question, not only of Mr. Patel, but also of Mr. David, the other property. But it's also amusing to me, of all these people that sent emails also kept referring to Mr. David's property as this abandoned property. Not an abandoned property. It's his family's property. It's not abandoned. It is currently not occupied, hardly abandoned. In any case, what happens here remains to be seen. And I don't think any of us up here would have even agreed to jump from point zero to point 60, go from zero to eminent domain. That is not what has happened here. In any case, I hope that people, whatever their point of view is on this, will take the time to understand exactly what is going on before they make comments about it.
Thank you. There's no other business before the council, except in the memory of the survivors of Pearl Harbor and World War II, as well as the memory of Jack Kaiser.
Why don't we just expand that, Mr. Mayor? How about all of those who served at that time, time of Pearl Harbor attack, rather than just those who survived it? How about those who didn't survive it as well? We could adjourn in there as well.
Omood. That's a better way of, that's what I intended. Omood. We are adjourned.